Would you like to call this regular meeting of the board trustees for order? It is 7:30 p.m. and I will call this meeting from the phone.
Here.
Trustee Corrigan.
Here.
Trustee Davis.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Present.
Trustee Roster.
Here.
Trustee Schnaller is absent. Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and J.S.A. ten point four dash six. An addition to this meeting is posted in Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Caljean, Village Clerk.
And we have one resolution to go into executive session.
Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash one seven one authorizing an executive session at the July twenty seventh, two thousand and fifteen regular meeting of the board of trustees to discuss the following matters. One, Village Hall contract negotiations attorney-client privilege. Two, redevelopment updates contract negotiations attorney-client privilege. Three, administration contracts negotiations attorney-client privilege. Four, public safety contract negotiations attorney-client privilege.
And we have one more addition requested by trustee DeBowie number five, water operation and maintenance attorney-client privilege. May I have a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Okay, we will be back out at eight o'clock.
I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order. It is Monday, July 27th, eight oh nine P M. Can I have a roll call, please?
Village President Callum.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee DeBoe.
Here.
Trustee Robinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnaller Zapsit. Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Calchin. Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to be followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we have a few announcements tonight. South Orange Summer Nights Taste the Music Concert Series last concert will take place on Wednesday, July 29th, Rock the Hill on Flood's Hill. Taste the Music is brought to you by South Orange Performing Arts Center and the South Orange Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs along with our very generous sponsors, B C B Community Bank, Maple Crest Ford Lincoln, and the Governor's Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse. Next, on Tuesday, August 4th, South Orange will host the Sixth Annual National Night Out. At six thirty P M. the event kicks off with live music featuring Isle Five, a hot rock pop cover band, as well as a public safety fair where residents can learn more about the various departments and organizations in town. There will be a Kid Zone with bouncy houses, coloring stations, activities, and free merchandise giveaways including T-shirts, frisbees, balloons, and glow sticks. You can tell I wrote this announcement. Various food trucks and vendors will be on site, so come hungry. Then at eight thirty P M. sit under the stars with some popcorn and cotton candy and enjoy Big Hero Six. Don't forget your blanket and lawn chairs. And a special announcement that I just put on Facebook is that we may get a helicopter landing on that night. So a very special thanks to our police chief and our South Orange Police Department. That would certainly be something very exciting for our kids. Last, South Orange Summer Nights Moonlit Movies will be held Wednesday, August 12th, 19th, and 26th on Flood's Hill. This year's movies include Ferris Bueller's Day Off, Dirty Dancing, and Enchanted. Moonlit Movies is brought to you by the South Orange Performing Arts Center and the South Orange Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs along with our very generous sponsors, B C B Community Bank, Maple Crest Ford Lincoln, and the Governor's Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse. And a little add-on to our first announcement is that if you are joining us on this Wednesday night for the final concert, there will be a water slide. Mr. Lerner, would you like to expand on that just a little bit?
Very large water slide.
A very large water slide and misting stations?
And misting, it'll be a misting tent.
Supposed to, misting tent. It will be a hot night, so we hope that'll be exciting for the community. Are there anything, any other additional items that weren't in the announcements from the trustees? Okay, great. We are moving on to presentations. Tonight, we will have the Board of Health presentation on trap, neuter, and release. Do we have a representative from the Board of Health? If you can come up here, please. And if you can please try and, I know Mr. Lerner had reached out, if you can try and limit to roughly ten minutes or so for the presentation, thank you.
Do you need the PowerPoint or video first?
I think we're going to do PowerPoint first and then we'll do video. Thanks to my phone. Good evening, I'm Dr. David Pittman, President of the Board of Health. The Board of Health is a statutory board and has been looking at the issue of feral cats' trap, neuter, release for several years. We passed statutes on the feeding and housing of feral cats approximately three years ago. Recently, there has been renewed interest in managed cat colonies in South Orange. The Board of Health revisited T N R. and Dr. David Thomas, one of our members for the past three and a half years, will be presenting information to you compiled with the help of V O H. member Dean Cameros, who is a business analyst at Novartis and was present at the April 2015 V O T. meeting where cat colonies were discussed. Dr. Thomas is a physician specializing in internal medicine who is starting a fellowship in infectious diseases at the University of Connecticut School of Medicine. In addition to his medical degree, Dr. Thomas holds a Masters in Public Health, in biomedical public health, epidemiology of emerging infectious diseases, and chronic disease epidemiology. Like Dr. Thomas, all members of the Board of Health are first and foremost concerned about the health and welfare of the residents of South Orange. Dean, David, take over.
Thank you. Good evening. This is an issue that I think has caused a lot of concern with everybody on both sides of the debate for quite some time now. I became familiar with it just a few meetings ago last year. And we decided to put this presentation together to kind of gather our thought process on this, what we've looked at, and what the evidence is basically pointing to at this point in time in regards to what our charge is to protect the health of the people of South Orange. Okay, that's me. So the first thing we're going to talk about here is that the various public health risks with the feral cats, public nuisance, the trap, neuter, and release program, and our concerns for it as a solution to feral cats, and our overall position on T N R. at the So, what are feral animals? Now, basically, this is any, basically, this is any animal that you have that's out in the wild can be considered a feral animal, but in particular, what we're referring to is animals that were meant to be kept as pets but are living out in the wilds. One of the bigger concerns that we have about the feral animal population here is that we have these entities known as zoonotic diseases, which in particular pose a lot of...
You have to stay by the mic. Or you can, you can take it out.
Take it out. Okay. The most obvious one is rabies, which, in all of the years that we've known about rabies, there has been a single solitary survivor. It was a middle-aged woman who was bit by a raccoon, and she spent several weeks in intensive care and managed with supportive care to survive the acute illness. That is the one and only example of this. Another major public health issue, particularly to those individuals who are immunocompromised, patients with multiple myeloma, patients with HIV, patients on immunosuppressive drugs for rheumatoid arthritis and other diseases, can fall victim and prey to several opportunistic infections, and toxoplasmosis is one of the more common ones that we see. I myself have treated multiple patients with this during the course of my residency here in New Jersey. And some of them, we're not really certain where the contraction came from, others, it was very clearly from cats. The toxoplasma gondii is a parasite that in cystic form exists in the, in the animal stools. These stools, you can infect an individual who has a compromised immunism, who has exposure to as few as seven cysts. Ringworm is another one that's a little bit more common that we talk about, which I would say is probably about the least concerning thing that you could really hope for, which is a bacterial skin infection. The other one that I myself have personally experienced in my youth, cat scratch fever, which is actually a real disease caused by a bacterial known as Borrelia burgdorferi. And it's, basically, what happens is you get a scratch and what happens is the bacteria get into the blood and they cause this formulation of granulomas, which is basically bundles of tissue within the glands, typically in the neck is where we see it. It's been seen quite a bit on children, usually a self-limiting illness, but very painful and uncomfortable, lasts a couple of weeks. There are numerous other examples that I could go into, but obviously, the most important one that we're worried about, in particular with the Northeast, is rabies, of course. Now, we've had two incidents already of positive raccoons, one in October 2014 and one in May 2014. 2014, I'm sorry, May 2015, recently. This is obviously a major public health issue. People downplay it for the most part because infection in humans has become more rare over the years. Do quite a bit, I think, into public health efforts to try and drop vaccination in the form of an oral pill in meat packets throughout the forest areas of the Northeast. But, like any medical intervention, it's never a 100% guarantee, and there are plenty of animals out there that still remain at risk for contracting the disease, and this also does not help any animal that is already infected with the disease. Cats as a public health issue in New Jersey, 90% of the domestic animal rabies cases in New Jersey since 1989 were cats. For the last five years, there's been an average of 16 cats with rabies annually in New Jersey, and this is almost like an accident waiting to happen. This is just an excerpt of the management of the domestic animals, which I think is available in the presentation. So, I already pretty much went into most of the details about toxoplasma, but as many cat owners allow their cats to poop and pee outside, there are potential exposures in the environment just passively from this. It doesn't take a whole lot of exposure from an individual who is immunocompromised to contract one of these illnesses. As far as their ecological impacts and public nuisance, their impact on the ecosystem and the native wildlife is fairly apparent. Housecats are one of the most efficient predators on the planet. I'd say most cats in general are up there, but housecats in particular, very small, very agile. And they have decimated our songbird population, which is something that has very personally hurt my feelings, because I absolutely love to just go to the park and sit and just enjoy looking at the birds, the ducks, the geese even sometimes. And, you know, if we were to increase the numbers of these animals roaming around, this would only affect the ecological balance of our community even more. The other more obvious issues is the noise and the overall smell of the urine and feces, which also both have the potential of spreading diseases, I've gone into. As far as South Orange is concerned, the major nuisance investigations in July 2011, we had several residents complaining of stray cats on Hamilton Road. There was strong odors, there was fecal waste everywhere, they dug up flowers. People were fearing for their children's safety, and they were not able to enjoy their properties. We trapped the 15 cats, and the cat feeder was located on Holland Road. They trapped another dozen cats and then licensed six cats inside their home. And then they could enjoy their property. In August of 2014, we also had several residents residing on Meadow Brook Lane complaining of stray cats, and these were also most of the similar complaints that the previous group complained about. But after several years, this still continues to be a problem here and there. But as far as trap, neuter, and release, and I just want to say that I'm a cat lover. I own cats myself. I've had cats pretty much my entire life. And I'm not going to come up here and have to take any kind of a pro-euthanasia stance, so everybody can go ahead and relax about that. But I'm very concerned that this, as a solution, really doesn't seem to work when we look at it from the position of taking the health of the community as the most important issue. So, what is this program? Basically, the idea is we have the feral cats that are already there, we trap all the cats, we neuter them, and then we release them back into the wild with identification via the ear tip. They are monitored with controlled feedings, and we trap any newcomers supposedly. This does not reduce the risk of disease transmission at all, and as a matter of fact, it increases the number of potential disease carriers that can introduce this into the population as a whole. There's quite a bit of information, that's a rather busy slide, but it's definitely worth reading. The other issue is it does not seem to be effective even in what it was originally intended to do, which is to control the population of the feral cats in that given community. In almost every instance that I have seen or read about, any established TNR colonies are either at the same size that when they started, or they are growing. One of the things when you have a lot of cats around is that it's going to lead to increased survival, because they work together, and they basically help each other survive more. It leads to increased kitten survival, which bolsters their numbers, and even when they're not able to reproduce, there will be more animals drawn to that area. Not only just cats, but other animals that are more commonly associated with rabies traditionally, such as raccoons. It doesn't really protect the cats either. They face pretty much any of the dangers that you would expect in the wild, predation, automobiles, disease, freezing to death, starvation. So, we're worried about this even, even from the perspective of trying to do what's best for the cats. It still doesn't appear to be a very good solution. There are numerous public health veterinary and ecological associations that are opposed to this, and this is actually the shortlist. There are several more actually that I've seen. And lastly, just to, you know, recapitulate everything that I'm saying, our final position on this is that we recognize that this does not reduce the public health risk of disease or the transmission for human and domestic cats. It's unlikely to have any significant positive impact on the feral cat population and may in fact make it worse. Does not reduce the incidence of nuisance to the tax bank residents, and it fosters less responsible ownership, all at the taxpayers' expense. So, what we're recommending at this point is we're going to continue to require the licensing of all the cats. We are in the future possibly going to consider requiring microchipping of all cats. We encourage that owned cats be kept indoors, in an outdoor enclosure, or on a leash, and must be, I would say, would at least be recommended that they be directly supervised whenever they are outside. Continue to prohibit public feeding and sheltering, and to enforce maximum number of pets per household. We're going to continue to prevent the establishment of any managed cat colonies in wildlife-sensitive ecosystems. We're going to increase public education and awareness, this being the first step of that, and we want to continue to prevent disease and promote the physical well-being through policy development and disease detection and prevention, and education and enforcement of the health policies of South Orange. Here's just a few of the sources. There were actually two particular scholarly articles that went into details about zoonotic diseases, and in particular also toxoplasmas' risk to public health in relation to this as well. That's basically...
We have a video, if you have a moment, we'd love you to watch it. Time is pressing, but if you have a video.
How long is the video?
How long is the video? Well, while we're, while we're getting, or if you want to watch that, getting it ready, just to emphasize, one of our concerns is if, even if the cat is vaccinated for rabies, we don't know if that cat is re-exposed to a rabid animal in the wild, if it will contract rabies. Think about when you take your kid to the hospital with a cud, and they, they've already, you know, had their inoculations for tetanus, they still will get a tetanus booster. We don't know that these cats in the wild, who have been vaccinated through TNR, aren't exposed to a raccoon and develop rabies. Rabies is horrible. We don't want our citizens to get rabies, or our pregnant citizens to contract toxoplasmosis from handling these cats. We want to reduce the number of feral cats in the community, and we don't want our citizens, even our very well-intentioned citizens who like TNR, to be hurt through contact with a diseased animal.
So, how, how long did you say, Mr. Lerner, this video?
Nine minutes and nine seconds.
Okay, so we did want to limit the presentation, and I know there's going to probably be some questions, and then there's public comments on this. So, we will post your presentation to the website as a presentation from the Board of Health, and we can also include a link to the video if that's okay with you.
Be happy to.
Great. Before you leave, are there any questions from the Board of Trustees, from the Board of Health? Okay.
Just to ask a couple of follow-ups on a couple of statements you made, one of which is that TNR fosters less responsible domestic cat ownership? What specifically do you mean by that?
That was a concern of the expression. I think in some of the videos and some of the literature that you read, when people see these cats out there, and people be taken care of, you'll have someone just drop off the cat. That's actually in the video, if you watch that, that's one, where one cat colony got much bigger, because people were saying, okay, well, I don't want this cat, but I know if I put this cat out in this colony, it'll get fed and taken care of, so I'll do that. That's what, that's what we think that, or this information indicates, that if these colonies are out there, people are more likely to say, okay, I'll just instead of taking care of the cat, I'll put it out in its colony, and it'll be off my hands.
The other thing was, all at the taxpayers' expense, what, what expense are you referring to?
Just the, the monitoring of, please, just a minute. Just the monitoring of the colonies is going to incur a significant expense over time, and this is something that the township is going to have to take a role in. It cannot be something that is privatized or left up to individual citizens. It's going to be on our backs to keep this going, if it's, if it's ever instituted.
Yeah, ultimately, the response, the buck stops with the Board of Health, and I guess you guys as well.
Ultimately, the buck stops with the Board of Health and our health officer and our animal control officer. If you have a feeding window, you're allowed to feed the cats from, say, 7 to 8 in the morning, or 8 to 9 in the morning, how do we ensure that that window is enforced? And if you have an open-ended feeding, what's to prevent, you know, the hedgehog and the raccoon and every other animal from coming into the backyard? So, there are enforcement issues in having that feeding window with the TNR.
Another example is in some of the literature, there was an incident in South Carolina a few years ago, where the cat showed up at a Little League game or a public event. That cat was exposed to many children, and they all had, they all required a booster or a shot or a pep, a prophylaxis for rabies. That is at the public health's expense. That is, that is the town's expense if that happened, if the cat is at, or at least in this particular case, I don't know if in New Jersey, but in this particular case, when all those folks were exposed to a rabid cat, the, the public health administration or the public health of that town was responsible for making sure that all those citizens got, got that prophylactic shot for rabies. So, that's, that's a significant offense, a significant expense, I think each one is like $5,000, several, the cost is thousands of dollars, right? Each, each, each injection, each prophylactic shot is, is in the thousands of dollars.
And tangentially, there could even be a liability issue if we put in place managed cat colonies and people do contract rabies from it.
Last question is, I suppose, a logic question. Your list of recommendations, I don't see anything that specifically is in there about limiting the population specifically, yet if trap, neuter, and release is at least neutering a population of cats, isn't that a step in the right direction in terms of what you're saying? Albeit over the period of a single cat life, but that is a single cat which cannot reproduce, literally, and therefore, over time, doesn't it achieve one of the goals that you're after, which is to, to begin to manage the population so that it's not, you know, creating a natural imbalance, et cetera? That's sort of a logic thing I'm not getting.
Just immigration. I mean, you're, you're connected to several other towns, so if the population becomes static, you can have cats immigrating from other towns and other areas that will fill that void. If there's opportunity for food, herbs would have not, the, at least that's what the literature says, that the, because, you know, because we're connected to several other towns and several other areas, if you do, the neutering is not so effective, because you can get immigration from other areas.
Well, then, wouldn't a, a more robust TNR program in contiguous communities be a better solution to mitigating immigration?
Well, the current, the current program of catching the, the cats and putting them up in shelters or hopefully in control shelters, where they're adopted, I think is the best possible solution, was quality of life, quality of environment, and plus community. So, it seems like capturing the cats and putting them up for adoption.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Oh, capturing the cats and putting them up for adoption is probably the best program, which is what we've been pursuing. And, and I think South Orange has managed its cat population with a few exceptions that we showed you earlier.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Number one, do you have any idea how many feral cats there are in South Orange? Or ballpark, or?
I was talking to our animal control officer last week about it, and she's, she said it's not a big problem.
And how many cats were caught in the past 12 months?
John, do you have a number on that?
And one of the things you recommend is to require a licensing of all cats, and if I remember correctly, the number is extremely low.
Correct.
So, how, what's that game plan to, to increase that number of cat licenses?
We're, we are always on the lookout for cats that are unlicensed in homes. We think it's important to do.
But that's failed miserably, so I, I think that you need a different plan. I know the dog, the number of dogs and cats being licensed is probably well under 10% of the actual number.
You're probably right.
And, and I'm not really quite sure how you do it, but it just doesn't seem like it. But if the goal is to reduce the number of cats, it seems like both programs are going to fall short. And I don't see how rabies and all the other illnesses you put up there are reduced by doing what's being done now or with the TNR. Both those issues are still out there no matter what. Is that correct?
Both issues are out there, but we feel the better solution is to try and catch the cats.
Okay, but if, if you're catching the cats for TNR, and then you neuter them, and then at the same time you have to expect them to see if they have any illnesses and give them shots, it doesn't come out any different in the long run from your plan versus their plan, except for the cats who are also being neutered.
Except you may be bringing other cats into the community with the TNR.
So, if you, what you're saying to avoid the immigration issue, and believe me, I'm not a fan of other, you know, I'm not saying, but if you, if you, if you're, if your argument is immigration, it's hard to believe we're talking about immigration in it. And people, one of those 27 candidates for Republican, I'm not...
Donald Trump, Donald Trump will be up here.
But the, well, yeah, he did, that's true. And...
Build a wall.
If I, if I, talk about immigration, so you would then be saying that if West Orange, South Orange, Maplewood, Milburn, East Orange, Orange, all got together and came up with one plan for all the towns, that would effectively deal with the immigration issue?
I mean, the, so there's a, there's a bunch of articles cited in there. Have a look at them. They tend not to, they're studied by, you know, published literature in, what's the, you've probably read the journal, you probably get it at your house, whatever, it's, it's the zoonautical disease.
There's a few different, there's a few different journals, actually, that this is published in, but I mean, the way scientific literature works these days is any journal that has an interest in the topic would consider it for publication, but all of the evidence that they present in these papers have to be critically vetted by other experts in the field, naturally, before it's considered to be a scientific publication. And that was the kind of literature that we were looking for to substantiate whether this would work or not. And that's what we've found so far, is that almost universally, as it's been studied scientifically, it does not work to fix this problem. I agree with you that our current strategy is not really necessarily doing it either. I feel that we have a greater degree of control by advising people to spay and neuter their pets, and to control the population that way and through adoption, than if we were to just let these cats go out in the wild, even if they were monitored, all, I mean, what's to keep us necessarily from losing track of one? What happens when one of them dies? Do we know where they die, how they died? And, you know, all of this is relevant towards, you know, trying to keep track of a population like this, and especially if it's a large population across multiple townships. It's just going to be a, a much more confusing, I think, endeavor than what we're currently doing. But I agree that we do need to find other solutions to the problem.
Yeah, I, again, I just, I think I'm missing something again logically, and you're talking about people spaying and neutering their pets, which is not a feral animal, that's, you know, a domestic animal. And I think if someone has a domestic pet... And I think if someone has a domestic pet, then they're sort of going to be more responsible in terms of spaying, neutering, making sure the cat is properly vaccinated, et cetera. That doesn't seem like the population that we're talking to or talking about. It's specifically the feral cat population. And again, Mark touched on what my sort of logic disconnect is, and that is that what you're proposing that we continue doing doesn't affect the population any more than TNR, as you're saying, would. And so cats still exist, and so toxoplasmosis as a danger still exists, as does rabies in either scenario.
So that, so one of the premises is that you can actually neuter all of the cats that are out there? You can actually physically do that? And that's one of the reasons why TNR hasn't worked in this published literature, is that you just simply, the time and expense and effort to get to every single cat is just simply not feasible. And even in, the video has one in Florida, where by the way, the most extensively documented feral cat colonies in the country, just the, and they have three full-time people whose job it is to manage this colony. They simply cannot get to all of the cats to do what needs to be done to keep them healthy and to keep them safe from each other and from humans. I think the other thing is that when you have people starting to feed them outside, their population is bound to grow. So if you have a community that says, "We are pro-TNR," you have this issue of irresponsible pet ownership where people will put their cats out there and therefore, by definition, you will get population growth where it wouldn't have been in the first place if you didn't condone the TNR. So there are two issues. One is the abdication of pet responsibility, and the other is you just simply cannot neuter every single cat without significant expense and significant effort to do that.
But in order to control the population, wouldn't we have to, at our rates, in order to effectively manage the population, still be able to capture significantly more than what we're getting today, which is averaging five a month? So we're agreeing that both models aren't working.
Well, I think my, my understanding from talking to John is that, you know, it isn't currently an issue right now in the town. And are we going to create one by doing this? I mean, there's, I know I have a couple of feral cats on my block, there's a handful, but, and you have Meadowbrook issue and there were a couple of other places, so right now, it's simply not a, not a problem in South Orange. And are you going to create one by condoning this? That's really, you know, in the spirit of the presentation is, do you want to create a problem? Would a problem be created where there isn't one now?
I think right now, we're ignoring the problem. I think there's a lot more cats than what's suggested in the numbers that have been submitted to the Board of Trustees. And the numbers, even though they're not in front of Mr. Fester right now, is five cats a month. I can probably name five feral cats on my block that are there right now. I think it's probably a lot bigger than what we are recognizing.
You get the names?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can tell based on their color. I have, are there any other questions from the trustees? Any questions from the staff?
Yeah, I do have a question. I still don't get how you are proposing to control the number of cats. Is it TN, not the R?
The release is the big problem and the feeding is the big problem. The trap and neuter, less so, although we have concerns about people contracting diseases who are trapping and neutering these cats and having contact with these feral cats. So that's one big concern we have. Another quality of life, just speaking to your point, is what if you're the neighbor of the person living in a cat colony and you don't want to live next to them? So it's been proposed that you have to get the consent of five of your neighbors before you can establish a cat colony. What if homeownership changes? What if the person gets pregnant and is now concerned about proximity of feral cats to a pregnant woman? So these are where we have concerns. We don't want to be a magnet for feral cats.
What I haven't heard is the absolute recommendation from the Health Department. What is your recommendation?
Don't do it.
Well.
Well, the current consensus of the board is that we do not believe that we should institute TNR at this time. We believe that it does require more scientific research to back up what is already being done in the existing colonies to determine if there is any long-term benefit from this, because so far, there doesn't appear to be. And what we are suggesting to do right now is to continue, as you said, the trap and the neuter. I would like to see trap, neuter, adopt personally, but, I mean, it is somewhat of an idealistic solution. And part of this is going to be that we're going to need to brainstorm more on what to do about this that might be more effective while not exposing the general public to an increased risk of exposure to diseases.
Well, you made a suggestion before about placing chips in the animals. Is that a recommendation that you're making?
That's something that we're looking into. It's not an active recommendation at this point in time.
We haven't debated it as, to pass it as a statute, but I think it's, I personally think it's a great idea, and I think it's something we can consider. We did pass statutes making it illegal to house cats, feral cats, and to feed feral cats. I think there's a limit of six pets that people can have, a total of six pets. That was done about three years ago.
And do you have any recommendation on how do we get cats licensed?
I think we need to do more publicity and communication with the public about the importance of licensing their cats. So I have to assume part of it's ignorance and part of it's they're just avoiding what's already on the books. Dogs too, you need dogs licensed as well.
Can you go over a little bit, I'm sorry, were there any other questions from the trustees? So when you arrived at this policy to not support TNR, how, can you just explain to me how you arrived? Is it a vote of your Board of Health? Is it, how many people participate in that? I'd just like to know how you drew the conclusion. Was it the three here? Is it unanimous from the existing Board of Health? How was that decided?
I would say about three years ago, we were presented with this issue by members of the public, and we had discussion and debate about it and passed two statutes that I just mentioned. So that was a few years ago. The more recent meetings have been to go over a lot of this material and view material.
And so this is a recent recommendation from the?
This is a recent recommendation from the Board of Health, as incorporated in our presentation.
Okay, was that a unanimous recommendation from the Board of Health? I'm trying to see, was there debate?
Did we have a vote on it? I don't think we had a vote. I don't think we had a vote on it.
Is this something that with research that the Board of Health would be willing to reconsider? Or is this your final recommendation and that's it?
No, I think we're always willing to hear public and other views on the matter, so yes, we would be willing to listen to it. And if there's evidence on the other side, of course, we'd listen to it.
I would say, and this is going to be one where, you know, we might just disagree on the policies, and that's fine. One thing that I can't seem to wrap my head around, when you say, gave all these examples of things that could go wrong and noting that it's a real public health issue, what I can't wrap my head around is how over 150 other municipalities have made TNR work. And some of the groups that we use as a resource for advice to the municipalities, such as, where are they? The International County City Management Association, we go to them for a lot of stuff. They're putting out webinars on this issue, supporting it. Also Sustainable Jersey, which a lot of us work with regularly. These were all from the presentation that was provided to us back in April. And so these are all groups that we look to for best practices to see and learn a little bit more about topics that we're not experts in, and they're pushing us in this direction. And I look at our surrounding towns most recently, and it is Maplewood, Milburn, Livingston, West Caldwell, Verona, Montclair, Bloomfield, Nutley have all some form of this program that's active. Is it, is it that because of political pressure, they cave? Are they making bad public health decisions for their towns? Do they not get it and we do? This is a really big disconnect between what they're adopting, what they're piloting, what they are saying. And I've spoken to six mayors now. They're claiming it's a success, it's better, it's better at controlling the population. In some instances, it's cheaper. For Maplewood, they're piloting this and they've got a great group that's doing it for free. And so it's at no charge to them to pilot this program. For us to do what we're doing, it does cost money, significant tax dollars if you were to capture as many animals or cats that there are. And if they don't get adopted, they do get utilized, and that's our pattern. So I'm urging you to really relook at this issue. I mean, I know that there was positions I probably had three years ago, and things have changed, and some other people tried it. It looks like things are coming out that might be favorable for it. And I'm looking at your sources, your credible sources, and I'm seeing a lot of stuff that is outdated. I'm also seeing advocacy groups that obviously I don't think would be supportive of TNR. So I feel if we compiled, and I guess it's because I've been reading the research from residents, which, you know, when they send you an attachment, it's like 20 megabytes. So I've spent a lot of time just reading on this issue because I couldn't figure out the disconnect between the Board of Health presentation and what I'm seeing from surrounding municipalities. So if there is flexibility, then I would urge our residents and folks, because this is not the time for the public to get into a debate with the Board of Health. You have your own meetings, you have your own Board of Health, this isn't the forum for that. But if you give me some kind of inkling that this is a conversation you want to be having, then we can in good faith tell our residents, you know, this is a place to go, and people are going to have open, you know, minds to looking at some things that may be recent, maybe looking to towns that are doing this program to understand how they're dealing with public education, those type of things, when you have cat colonies and trying to educate folks on how it works. Or, you know, you can, the alternative is, we've had a vote on it, we're a statutory board, we need to move on to other business. And if that's your position, that's your position. But it's kind of easier to let the public know what the next step is. That was a lot.
I would love to see the numbers on these, on these successful colonies that they've started, because I would be interested personally just to know, you know, how that's working and what they did exactly and what their methodology is to get this to work well versus some of the others that we've seen that obviously did not experience any success, particularly some of the larger colonies, as we mentioned, like the one in Florida. And if there is a way for this to work, and it benefits the cats, and it does not cause a problem for the residents and the health, then I would be all for it. But, but the reality of it is, is that I believe that these diseases are so devastating that even a single person getting infected on this is just simply not a good enough trade. Until we can 100% guarantee the safety of the township, I don't think we can implement this.
Just to reemphasize the point, that is our first and foremost, you know, overarching goal as Board of Health members. We're all, many of us are healthcare professionals. We don't want to see any harm come to the citizens of the town because of a policy that may be misplaced. Our love is for the citizens, and while I'm a cat owner, you're a cat owner.
I'm allergic to cats.
I love my neighbors more than I love my cats, and that's really the bottom line. And yes, we will, of course, entertain other points of view, and we have not voted on it.
So could we advise the residents who are interested in this topic? I know that one attended your last meeting. It's, August is a tough month. I know people travel and all that, but can we set a time where the residents? Because it's a little weird, I did it, I added it to the agenda last time. I was just enamored with learning about it, and so we did have a presentation here. It's nice to have them here because they're videotaped, so you can show kind of both sides and be able to share the presentations, and everybody's working with the same information. But if you are saying that you are willing to revisit or continue this conversation, then we can in good faith tell our residents that, you know, you're welcome to attend the next Board of Health meeting. Also, maybe perhaps not even at the meeting, but have a sit-down conversation and go through some of these things. Because I learned a lot by just sitting down and listening to people who were experts. I said the joke before at one of the meetings that somebody asked me about cats, and I thought they were talking about the Broadway musical. So like, I had a lot in store, learning about all of this, but I have found it to be really, really informative. And I wouldn't be pushing for it if I hadn't spoken to so many people and elected officials in other towns, one in particular who does not like animals very much. And he was like, "You know what? We caved, we finally said, 'Try it.'" Five years later, it is working. I don't know why it's working, I couldn't tell you how it's working, but it is working, and we've seen a reduction. And so for all these people that I've spoken with, I'm more than happy to, you know, share with you what I've received so that we're looking at that and like just keeping our minds open to.
There's no question, we will, we will listen to whoever comes to our meeting. It's a complicated system to put in place, and there are many permutations on the system. So if people come and have good ideas, of course, we'll listen to it.
Yeah, I would just want to add that I'm sure that it is all about the execution. Most things are. Theories are nice, but it's all about execution. But I would also just caution and say to the people who are pro-TNR, let's not buy into this false dichotomy that either you're with the Board of Health or you're with TNR. They do have their own mandate and their own concern, which is public health, and you have your own concerns as well. And I don't think we should buy into this false dichotomy that it's one or the other and that there can't be a system or an execution that could serve both purposes and both needs.
That's true, yes. Closing call.
Okay, so with that said, a big thank you for coming out and doing this presentation. And I think this is the first presentation since I've been the village president. So definitely wonderful to see you guys here and to help educate us a little bit more about your position. It was very, very helpful, and we look forward to working with you guys moving forward. Okay, so moving on to the public comments portion of the meeting. As a reminder, if you can come up to the mic, the one at the front of the stage, your name, your address, and we're limiting comments to three minutes. Also a reminder is that if you're trying to persuade the governing body, from the interaction we just had, you know this is under the Board of Health. Their meeting, they meet the third Thursday in August, I believe is correct. Is it the third Thursday? So. Okay, so it'd be the third Thursday in September. So again, you're always welcome to come speak. We're not doing a back and forth with the Board of Health or a cross-examination or any of that. This isn't the place for that. But I do believe that they had stated that they're open to a conversation, new information. So that meeting will be the third Thursday in September and at our municipal offices, which is 76 South Orange Avenue, third floor. With that said. And the time? At 7:30 PM, correct? 7:30? Wonderful.
If they're expecting a large turnout, you may want to help facilitate a meeting at a different location, such as the Bay.
Okay, so I will chat offline with some of our residents and citizens. If it appears that we might have a larger meeting, then we can work with the Board of Health to accommodate you in a location that can have a little bit more people in our conference rooms. So with that said, again, the microphone is open, three minutes, name, address.
My name's Len Twist. I'm a Carney resident, 20th South Midland Avenue, Unit S5. I'm the administrator for Carney TNR. We passed the ordinance on November 12th of last year. I currently have 27 caregivers working under me. I personally am responsible for trapping 76 cats. We issued an AC number, and that's how we keep track of that. Bergen County is our animal control officer. They have been giving me the numbers as we go. During the month of November, December, we had a 50% reduction. Keep in mind, we started on November 13th, trapping, neutering, returning the animals to their place of residence or adopting them out. We, that was, we only worked six weeks then, against two months the prior years, 50% reduction. The first quarter of this year, we had a 60% reduction. I'm thinking 20s. This is when I was talking about it in the beginning stages. I'm thinking a 20% reduction would be great. I'm hearing 60, I'm astonished. The second quarter of this year, we have a 54% reduction. I don't know where we dropped the ball, but I'll find out. We have been adopting out a lot of cats. I know that is one of the areas where some of the reductions are coming from. They're based upon the resident complaints and how many cats they pick up and bring in, how many cats I trap, neuter, and return to their colonies. We do have some very dedicated people, as I can see in the audience here, I've known many of them for some time now. And regarding some of the diseases, we haven't witnessed any rabies. We had one cat out of all these that had to get put down, we thought it was pregnant. When he went to abort, it had cancer, and they had to put him down. It was one incident. Now, my caregivers, I got several of them, they're doing 50-plus cats. So we do trap quite a few cats, more than five in a week. We have a station where you keep them for recovery after their vetting. We keep them there also before, because we don't go every day for vetting. We work in teams at times, sometimes it's just single people, but there are people that are only in control to go to the security. that are only in control to go to the secured area where the cats are kept. The toxoplasmosis, I've done a little studying on that myself, that's what started this argument that got me into TNR. You have a better shot at hitting Powerball. The way that toxoplasmosis is passed, the most common way is eating undercooked venison. In order to get it from cat's feces, you'd probably have to consume a whole link thinking it was a sausage. It isn't just a little bit.
No.
I just, no, I'm just saying it like it is. It takes a lot more than you would think. I don't hold a master's degree in anything. I do know that towns like Seaside Heights, Camden, Sea Caucus, Carney, Nutley, Harrison, all have TNR in place and it's been running successfully. I've gotten letters from all these towns for me to help promote it in my town. My mayor knows nothing about animals or cats. He does now, he's an expert in it. I got 100% unanimous decision from our council and they called me the boss. All right, I got a business certificate though, so I guess I'm the boss.
Sir, thank you very much.
Time out.
Thank you.
Can you please make sure to leave your information behind with our clerk? That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
My name is Amanda Hamm, 209 Route 206, Byram, New Jersey. I am a certified and licensed ACO in the state of New Jersey, former animal control officer for East Orange. Now, I want to start off with, you know, basically the surrounding townships that, or cities that have successfully been with TNR, which is Maplewood, Bloomfield, Glenridge, West Caldwell, West Orange, Carney, Jersey City, and Livingston. And about the adoption process. Now, how are we going to go about adopting animals when we don't even have an animal shelter in South Orange? When Dr. Kamani Griffiths, I believe, is contracted as the veterinarian and all these animals are going up to Country Lakes Animal Clinic when he has negligence charges against him as a veterinarian? I just want to know how that's possible.
This is the time for public comment, we respond at the end.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yeah, because it says here, below from John Festa, from a woman Susan, "Good morning, Susan, below are the impoundment fees for dogs and cats at the Country Lakes Animal Clinics. The fees cover seven-day mandatory holding period. Dogs, 0 to 14 pounds, $100.80, 15 to 39 pounds, $117.60, 40 to 59 pounds, $134.40, 60 to 79 pounds, $156.80, and so on and so on, basically up to $200." He actually, like I said, has negligence charges against him. I have inspection reports right here from the East Orange Animal Shelter. They have been failing miserably for the past five years for their inspection reports. Like I said, he also, Dr. Kamani Griffiths from Country Lakes Animal Clinic, he does not have even a proper 501(c)(3). His 501(c)(3) is fake. I have all the information right here about them failing and his 501(c)(3) being fake as well. And I would just like to see the TNR start happening because I can see it progress in other cities and other townships as well, and it is a very successful thing. And I think it is great for the community.
15 seconds.
You know, and also about the whole Florida and stuff like that, that's all different states and the South Carolina thing, that's very outdated. And actually, cats aren't carriers of rabies. They can contract rabies from other animals, such as raccoons, opossums, bats, things like that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have information for us that you're leaving, or are those your notes?
Um, I mean, they're pretty much mine, but if you'd like to take a look at them, I'll be sitting around for a while.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Pat Gilleran, I'm from Bloomfield. Bloomfield currently does TNR. I run a cat colony, I'm caregiver for six cats. They have all been neutered and vaccinated. I'm also an open public records advocate. And I submitted Oprah requests for the medical records for animals sent to Country Lakes by South Orange. There are no medical records. I submitted adoption, request for adoption records. There are no adoption records. I don't understand. I also submitted a request for the animals that are posted on Pet Finder. If you're not posting animals and there are no adoption records, what's happening to the five cats that are collected? Was it, I don't remember if it was every week or every month.
Month.
And this is, this is not a question to you. Bloomfield went from a Board of Health-controlled animal control and animal shelter to having our township administrator control it, and now we, we have Bergen Humane doing our animal control and animal sheltering. We run a, we have a feral cat colony at the animal shelter. We're expanding our TNR all the time. There's no reason why your Board of Health has to run animal sheltering and animal control. As a matter of fact, it's my understanding, and I really have no personal knowledge, but the Jack's Animal Shelter that was shut down here in South Orange, that was supposed to be inspected by your Board of Health. And yet it failed, it was failing inspections, it was disgusting. I've seen pictures, I don't know, it's, it's a conflict of interest to have your Board of Health running your animal sheltering. I have the RFP that Bloomfield sent out, I have the contract that they signed with Bergen Humane, and I will tell you that there are other people here who can tell you how to fund this. I, I suggest that you ask your Board of Health, how many cases of toxoplasmosis have they had? And haven't they, haven't they experienced toxoplasmosis in domesticated cats who are kept indoors? And how many cases of rabies are there? I mean, the fact is that TNR reduces the feral cat population. The cats on my block-
15 seconds remaining.
-were cats that were discarded-
15 seconds.
Okay. Were cats that were discarded by owners. They were indoor cats. Some of the kittens that are born are feral because they're not handled, but what you have are cats that were domesticated.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to address the Board of Trustees?
My name is Judy Steer, I live at 1026 Smith Manor Boulevard, West Orange, New Jersey. I am currently the president of the newly formed West Orange TNVR. We include vaccinations in our paperwork. Our ordinance is up to be approved in September. We have started to trap. In six weeks, we've trapped 17 cats, furrows, and 12 kittens. Four kittens have been adopted, nine are still in foster care. I have two at my house, they're just too young, one doesn't even weigh a pound. But they will, they're being socialized, they're being dealt with. The colonies we trap, they are monitored by a caregiver. They are put back and released, so the caregiver is in touch with us if anything different happens. There's something called the vacuum effect, where a colony really doesn't allow other cats to come in, that's their territory. And they don't really allow other furrows to enter. Cats are very territorial. I think it's a great idea if South Orange would join, West Orange and East Orange would join. I mean, so many towns are doing it, and it is working. It is working. You take one cat that's spayed or neutered, two, three litters maybe a year, you're looking at reduction of maybe, let's say, 15 kittens being born from one cat. That's reduction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jane Guom, I'm the executive director at People for Animals in Hillside, New Jersey. We do have a TNR ordinance in Hillside that we worked very closely with council to get passed. It was just enacted in October of 2014 and we used a sponsorship model for our ordinance. So People for Animals, as a nonprofit organization, actually runs the TNR program in Hillside. And we work very closely with the Board of Health to ensure rabies vaccination compliance and all of the very real concerns that your Board of Health has. I don't want to take up any more of your time, you guys are already on board, but I would like the opportunity to meet with the Board of Health and talk to them about the successes that we've seen. In, in Hillside, it's very early, but there are other, other municipalities in New Jersey that have been doing it for a while and have seen quite a bit of success. And there's a lot of different things that you can do with the TNVM, TNVR, it's like alphabet soup. But there's a lot of different things that you can put in place, including licensing compliance incentives and, and all of those things that the trustees brought up. So I would like the opportunity very much to help your Board of Health to explore some of the alternatives and come up with a plan that would work in South Orange.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna, can, let's do one round first?
And also I'd like to point out again, there's a gray handle, which if you squeeze it on the, the mic stand, it allows you to raise or lower the mic as is comfortable.
My name is Karen Nigren, I'm a veterinarian in Union, New Jersey, owner of TLC Pet Doctor. I'm in my other uniform because I'm also the animal control officer, on-call animal control officer, Morristown. We have, I've seen both TNR applied in Morristown and I've seen Union who does not use TNR. They actually kill anything that catches. We've had problems both ways. I'm going to explain to you a little bit what happened in Union. They started killing cats there. Now we have a rat and mice problem in Union. So eliminating one species of animal doesn't take care of the problem, so you develop another problem. Because there are natural predators that people don't realize.
Oh, wow.
I didn't break that into my program a little bit because three minutes is not a lot to talk about, I reckon. I'm going to try to read this as quickly as possible to cover as many points, but I'll leave whatever I don't get to.
Right.
Okay. The idea of feral cats associated with disease, TNR does help reduce the case of rabies. And the reason it helps reduce rabies is because, as others have said, they don't allow new cats into their colony. Cats are pretty much an established colony, it's not going to let other animals in. So the problem we have is we do get animals that get dumped into those colonies. So it does not increase a colony except for dumping. What we did in Morristown is we catch you dumping, you get fined. Where's the animal control?
Which you put in.
So we actually have done it, because if we catch people dumping, and we know which cats use TNR, because I'm the one who's actually doing spay and neuter with my town. We catch you, we're going to get fined. It's not easy to catch people, but people who are running those colonies know that new rats come in and they will try to capture those people. As far as the transmission of toxoplasma, springworm, cat scratch, I've had two of those diseases already. I caught them from cats in my office. These were owned animals, these were not furrows. You're more likely to get it from your own. And they did a study at, actually at Cornell University, that most women have already been infected with toxo when they were kids, because they had cats when they were kids. Those women are actually have antibodies to protect people, I should say, protect the infant from getting toxo. So if you already have antibodies, you're not going to get toxo. So that's not the way you're going to get it. So any cat could have that. As far as, as far as rabies is concerned, as an animal control officer, every animal that I've gotten that had tested positive for rabies was either a raccoon or a bat. Because most of those exposures were to people with, the animals had broken into their house. It wasn't an issue of people reaching out. Right now, I have a kitten in my office that is a feral that bit somebody, it's on quarantine, 10 days, yesterday. It's, it doesn't have rabies.
15 seconds remaining.
And he's doing great. Most of the animals that we sent for testing that were cats, none of those cats have ever tested positive for rabies. So it all becomes an issue of how much rabies you have in your town and what program you want to do, based on what is, is in your town. You have to know what's going on in your town. I'll leave my info.
Thank you. We'll also provide copies to the Board of Health as well. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to speak at this time? Just a reminder, we have a second public comment period after the Board takes action, in case you remember anything you wanted to say.
Hi. Jade Bruin, 10 North Ridge Road, South Orange, New Jersey. I wanted to speak because I appreciated your comment, Sheena, about how you felt there might be more of a population problem than we're recognizing. I personally have taken in over 25 cats in the last three years just in my neighborhood, and I don't look for them. I've vetted them, I've spay-neuter them, and I've rehomed them where applicable. I see them every night in the parking lot. I, there are, there may be certain neighborhoods that where they're not is. I'm right near the center of town and we do have a large feral cat population issue. At any given time, if you walk after midnight, you'll see them crossing South Orange Avenue. So I just wanted to say that. I wanted to comment a little bit on the, the rabies hype we were hearing throughout the Board of Ed presentation. I understand it's something that's to be taken very seriously, but I've been doing my own research after the first, for the last few days, knowing this meeting was coming up. I'm also, I was a veterinary technician for several years in California, so I do have experience. I've been involved in TNR for over 18 years. There has not been one case of cats transmitting rabies to humans in the last 40 years in the United States that I know of. I could not find one case. And I got those statistics from the New Jersey Department of Health on their website. I also found that there were only two cats that tested positive for rabies in 2014 in all of New Jersey. And from what I understand, those were domestic cases. I don't under, someone said earlier, cats can't carry rabies, they can obvi, they can obviously contract it. My veterinarian, Dr. Cameron in Montclair, has explained to me, he's been in business in practice over 50 years, that a cat cannot, they're too small, their systems can't actually hold rabies very long, they're very bad transmitters of rabies. They can contract it from raccoons or from another rabid animal, that's very unlikely that they're going to spread it. And as you can see, they obviously don't, it's extremely negligible. Toxoplasmosis, I think you've heard enough on that argument, but that is much more of a problem in domestic households than actual feral cats who choose to stay away from people. You have to actually handle the feces quite thoroughly to contract toxoplasmosis. I think that's about it. I mean, we did touch a bit on the vacuum effect with, with feral cats. People for Animals can speak much clearer to this than I can, but what's actually happened in colonies-
15 seconds remaining.
...that I've been witness to is when you, when you spay or neuter resident cats, they stay within the, that area and prevent new cats from coming in and using the resources in that area. So the idea that the colonies are going to grow, what Dr. Nigren said, yes, would probably only be to dumping. And if we're going to microchip and we're going to fine, there's ways to manage that. So, thank you.
Okay, is there any other member of the public that-
Hi, Regina Canino, 42 Blanchard Road. Just wanted to volunteer, if, if we came to an agreement with the Board of Health, I would be happy to oversee and monitor the project. I am a 501(c)(3), have had a Pet Finder site, so I could implement adoptions. I have a contract with Petco, so I'm allowed to either leave kittens there or take kittens to adoption days. And if I were to either work with another group or work with the Board of Health and the municipality, figuring out how it could be funded, perhaps taking the same- the municipality, figuring out how it could be funded, perhaps taking the same money that's given to the vet who's handling the trap and, well, it's euthanasia, that money could be put into TNVR. I would remove any kittens that I would find and pretty good at assessing who's adoptable and who's not. If I'm catching a cat that really can't be adopted, it needs to be returned. But if I ran across a cat that has been dumped, I could rehome it. So at least you know there's somebody locally who you've worked with before and you know who could be responsible for it if it's implemented. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to close this portion of the meeting, the public comment. Again, there's two public comment periods at the Board of Trustees' meetings, one before we take action and one after we take action. I certainly appreciate everybody who, who came forward and obviously offered a lot to this discussion, especially those who traveled here, to share some of your experiences, very much appreciated. It's always great when municipalities can learn from places outside of their own boundaries. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. We have, I circulated from the clerk's office, June 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th, and 30th, those are all my special meetings, right Ms. Caljean?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ward?
Yes.
Trustee DeBowie?
I'm gonna abstain on the 15th, on the 8th, 15th, 22nd, and I'll vote yes on the 29th and 30th.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall is absent. Thank you.
And next, we have two ordinances for first reading.
Ordinance 2015-15, introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the township of South Orange Village, Section 61-4.1, parentheses, six, retail business with respect to the hours of operation.
As you may recall, this was discussed in depth by the Board of Trustees, I believe, two, maybe three meetings ago. This recommendation came from our business code review, was vetted by our planning and zoning committee, was vetted at the, by our police department, and also was recommended by the South Orange Village Center Alliance. We wish to pilot six months of allowing hours of operation within specific zones to be extended until 1:00 a.m. Trustee Rosner, is there anything that you want to add to that description?
No, I think that covers it.
For the benefit of the public, Mr. Lewis, can you just go over briefly the map of where this will extend to?
Yeah, well, as this part of this pilot program, this covers properties in the B1 zone, which is essentially those properties fronting on South Orange Avenue from as far down, just past Rite Aid, and going in the other direction to Church Street, and going down Valley, those properties fronting, well, between Valley and the railroad tracks on the west side. And then we've included properties in the B2 zone that front on Valley between South Orange Avenue and Third Street. So it's both sides of Valley, and then all the way to the tracks to Third Street and the core downtown on South Orange Avenue.
Are there any questions from the trustees?
Yes, does that include any operations on Sloan? Does that?
Uh, yeah.
That's the B1 district.
Sloan Street is in the B1.
Basically, we just wanted to stay away from any residential areas as we pilot this and see how it works.
No, he just said, he just mentioned properties facing South Orange.
Yeah, you're correct.
That includes.
I should have expanded on the.
Okay.
Is there any discussion amongst the Board?
I just, I also wanted to ask, on the effective date, that is upon passage, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, my concern being that six months, I just, I would want to make sure that we had six months of relatively warmish weather, when people are much more likely to be out and about and taking advantage of this to see whether or not it works, as opposed to, you know, six months of dead winter.
Sure. The soonest that this can, for second reading, it needs to be advertised, the soonest that this could pass, assuming that the Board is supportive, is the second meeting in August, August 24th, that's correct?
Well, it needs to go to the Planning Board for their first meeting in August.
Oh, the referral to the Planning Board.
But, but it could be set up, if the Planning Board acted at their meeting in August, their 45 days would potentially allow them to wait even till September, but if the Planning Board were inclined to act on it at their meeting in August, we could schedule the public hearing for August 10th.
Okay, all right. We'll be sure to make sure.
We'll refer it right away, and we have some representatives on the Planning Board.
Yeah, absolutely, no, but your point is well noted, if this gets passed in the middle of winter, it doesn't really give us.
Right, for the test, we should test.
Okay, so we will move quickly if the trustees so wish to move this forward. Is there a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Davis Ward?
Yes.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall is absent, Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2015-16, introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending in their entirety Sections 138-5 through 138-10 of the Streets and Sidewalks, Chapter of the Township of South Orange Village, Code to Define the Site Triangle Necessary at Intersections, which must, must be kept clear of plant life.
Trustee Clark, you're up.
Yeah, so this is the second coming, or third coming, of our revised line of site ordinance, which I was happy to say that we, we've got some good feedback from the public, incorporated it. Mr. Rother also discussed some of their other issues with it and explained some stuff, so it was, there was some good, healthy give and take, and I think we now have a much more clear and executable ordinance, which ultimately gives us some safer streets.
Are there any questions regarding this ordinance?
No, just one comment, though, on it. There is a descriptive diagram that should have been attached to it, which inadvertently wasn't attached. It is there simply to demonstrate in graphic terms what the ordinance requires. It will be attached to the ordinance tomorrow morning and be available to the public, anybody who wants to see it. Doesn't change the ordinance in any respect, it simply shows in graphic presentation what the ordinance requires, and will be there on second reading.
He means a picture's worth a thousand words.
Well, one thing that I would suggest is if we could work closely with the police department or even our engineer, this is one of those ordinances where I feel like we could all list the 10 properties that we consistently get contacted about, and perhaps make sure that they're aware of this ordinance, they know what's coming, just to give them a heads up. Does that work?
I think that it's something that would be a real good thing to do.
Fabulous. Are there any other questions from the trustees? So this went from the Public Works Committee and the Public Safety Committee, correct? Recommendations? Okay, sounds like it was vetted well. Can I have a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall is absent, Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ward?
Yes. I move that ordinance 2015-15 and 2015-16, be scheduled for a second reading and final passage at the August 10th, Board of Trustees' meeting, and a public hearing be held at that time, where the reference ordinance, the village clerk is authorized to take the necessary actions to publish such notice for such hearings.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay. Next, we have notices for second reading. We have three of them.
Ordinance 2015-12, second reading of public hearing of an ordinance establishing salary ranges for certain non-union supervisory personnel.
Okay, this is a second reading on what was introduced at our last Board of Trustees' meetings. Again, this is an ordinance that actually sets the ranges, how we do typically, the Board of Trustees does a resolution that gives very specific salaries, but here is just the ordinance for the ranges. Are there any questions, comments, discussion? Is there a motion?
Move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That was the one thing Sue told me to do. At this point, I would like to open the public hearing on this ordinance, for any member of the public who wishes to be heard. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move.
I move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall is absent, Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ward?
Yes.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2015-12 passes. Next, we have 2015-13.
Second reading of public hearing of an ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits to establish a cap bank pursuant to NJS A48:4-45.14.
Mr. Lewis, can you just briefly recap what this ordinance is?
Yeah, again, this is of probably less utility, but again, no harm, no foul. It essentially allows you to bank appropriation cap. There are, the original cap, which is still in place, limited the amount, you could increase your annual appropriations year over year. It's been, to a large degree, superseded by the tax levy cap. However, there is conceivably some scenarios under which, if you have new additional revenues, that was not going to raise your tax limit, that you wanted to increase your appropriations, perhaps pay down extra debt, put extra money in your capital improvement fund, et cetera, that the bank allows you to, whatever you don't use up to what you would have permitted to, been permitted to increase your appropriations, you can bank that for a period of two years. We built up a pretty considerable bank. And I know I met at length with Trustee DeBowie and went through it with him, I know because it was a new concept to him. But it, again, it doesn't, we are not anywhere close to the appropriations cap, which is why we built up such a considerable bank. Realistically, you know, the likelihood of us having to use the bank is probably, probably pretty slim, but there is the potential somewhere in the future where we have some non-tax revenues, including pilots and other things that may come online, that may give, would do the opportunity to, and again, in my estimation, if you were gonna do it, you'd do it to either pay down debt, put extra money into capital improvement, I wouldn't use it to just sort of bloat your operating expenses, but really no harm in doing it, and as long as, and I think we do accurately communicate to the public, and quite frankly, the budget, there's nothing to hide, you do the math, you can see we're not going up anywhere close to that cap, so.
I'd like to open the public hearing for this ordinance. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to ordinance 2015-13? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion. Is there discussion, questions amongst the Board?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
I, again, don't see the need for this particular ordinance, and I think the perception is greater than the need for it. I will vote no on it.
Are there any other comments from the Board? Is there a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Rosner?
No.
Trustee Schnall? Snaps it, Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ward?
Yes.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
No.
That's not the end of the vote. The village president can cast the fourth vote.
Village President Callum?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll teach Schnell not to be here.
Okay, ordinance 2015-14, second reading of public hearing of an ordinance to amend Article 10 of the Code of the Township of South Orange Village to create a new subsection entitled Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs fees, and to amend subsection 5-71 to permit the Director of Recreation and Cultural Affairs to create appropriate rules and regulations.
Mr. Lewis or Mr. Lerner, would you like to go over this one?
Again, this is, two things, we, and it was a comment by the auditor, we had a scheduled recreation fees that weren't, I think, properly codified, so there's an effort to do that. It also updates some of the fees, and that it specifically includes a reference to authorizing the director to create rules and regulations. So it's, it does impose now the 2015 fees, which are in place, and does it in a way that's consistent with the requirements to codify them.
And I believe, based on what Trustee Schnall's comments were on the first reading, is that the Recreation and Cultural Affairs Committee supported this ordinance. I'd like to open the public hearing on ordinance 2015-14. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to this ordinance? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing portion. Is there discussion amongst the Board? Any comments, questions? If none, can I have a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Schnall is absent, Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ward?
Yes.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, resolutions 2015-172 through 2015-177 are placed on the consent agenda.
And one additional one that was put on the dais, which relates to some additional LSRP, licensed site remediation professional services by Hatchmont McDonald for relating to the previous underground storage tank, fuel tank removals at the police department. These are services that we are required to do by the Department of Environmental Protection. It's the contractor that was already hired, so it's within our additional professional services. Provision of our revised pay-to-play ordinance, it was provided by the engineer and kind of fell through the cracks, so apologize for the late addition, but there is some time sensitivity to it.
If we could just number that as an add-on resolution, 2015-179, because we do have 178 for separate action.
Are there any questions or comments from the Board? It's a small meeting, right?
I move the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ward?
Yes.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall is absent. Thank you.
So, I'm gonna go to parliamentary procedure camp this summer, because there was a few things that I failed to note, is that the second, two ordinances on second reading passed, well, actually, all of them passed, and so I need to make a mental note to make sure that, once the vote is taken, that I show that it is passed. So my apologies for that. We have one village president's appointment of Shayla Anastasio as a trustee to the South Orange Public Library Board. This is a president's appointment, so it does not need a vote from the Board of Trustees. And we have one resolution for separate action.
Resolution 2015-178, resolution authorizing supplemental temporary appropriations for current year 2015.
Howard, do you have any comments on this?
No, Barry, would it just explain the need for it?
And again, as you're aware, we've introduced our budget, which was delayed because of the election, so this just gives us, continues, you're allowed to do it incrementally, in a month or two at a time, to continue to fund operations pending the adoption of the full budget. It's based on a percentage of the prior year's budget.
Thank you.
And we won't have to do it again, after we adopt the budget on the next day.
And I move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Davis Ward?
Yes.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall is absent, Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Next, we have approval of bills.
I move the bills list, audited by the CFO Treasurer, previously distributed to the Board of Trustees for their review and comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall is absent, Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ward?
Yes.
Okay, so we are on to reports. We will start with the village president's report. So we have a lot of various projects that are happening right now in town and being proposed. There is one substantial update, is that myself, Trustee Rosner, as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Committee, and also the liaison to our Development Committee, along with our administrator and our professionals, had substantial time to sit down with the developers who had a proposal for Irvington Avenue. We feel that they put their best foot forward, they wanted to be a part of the energy and the revitalization of the corridor, and we thank them for that. Unfortunately, in the best-case scenarios of incentives that the village could offer, and their that the village could offer, and their best kind of foot forward, we could not end up in a place that would be acceptable to warrant even moving forward with a conditional designation, et cetera. So the board had made it clear, or specifically myself, to both the developers that this is not a project that the village is interested in moving forward with. So that project will not move forward. We will continue our revitalization efforts, our studies, looking to attract more investment to the area. Hopefully, we will continue bringing the excitement to the Irvington Avenue corridor. There is a food truck and craft beer festival scheduled for, what's that date, Adam?
Friday, October 2nd.
Friday, October 2nd. So we don't have our first development project yet, but we have a food truck and craft beer festival coming that way. In other news, we continue to discuss with the developers and the property owners, the club at Orange Lawn Tennis Club, to try and figure out a way to reduce ever so slightly the unit count. Right now, we're in a place where things are consistent with the surrounding properties, which is an RE 100, at 4.4 units per acre, so we're continuing to have that discussion. We hope to have resolution, and we have an advisory opinion that came from our Development Committee, which will be shared with the full Board of Trustees. In terms of other projects, right now, there's nothing too substantial. We continue to have meetings, myself and then Trustee Rosner is involved with all of these, and as we get things forward and we get recommendations from the Development Committee, we will keep the board posted on anything substantive. Appointment of special advisors to the village president, so this sounds very exciting, but it actually isn't that exciting. One of the things that I discuss with the trustees is sometimes on a case-by-case basis, there are times where we would like to loop in professionals or experts in the field to be involved with some of our analysis, specifically as it relates to development projects, or it could be an instance where we loop in, you know, former village president to discuss something that we have ongoing regarding shared services or an agreement of that nature. As Mr. Rother had provided to the Board of Trustees in writing, it is reasonable to expect that somebody, as a volunteer, not paid professional, could sign a waiver where we might ask their services to be able to join us in closed session, or be involved with reviewing documentation that would otherwise not be available to the public. So I am just updating you and soliciting any feedback. That I do intend to use this on a case-by-case basis. It's not limited to just the village president. If there are specific committees or trustee working groups where you feel that there is a specific resident with a skill set where it would be beneficial for them to be able to advise you and help us kind of move forward as a village, whatever the reason may be, that we do have the legal parameters for them to be able to sign whatever waivers or confidentiality agreements that Mr. Rother will provide them, so that we can leverage their experience and expert opinion in whatever the issues may or may not be. At the next meeting, I will have a couple individuals to be added to closed session for the board to discuss, and also hopefully agree that their experience would be beneficial on some of the items that we will be discussing. Next, we have business code review. This has been a really exciting undertaking. We just had a really long meeting this past week, and one of the recommendations that will be coming forward, I've discussed it here, and we're going to end up bringing it to the planning board for discussion, and then we're going to bounce it back and forth and hopefully have something in place, is that we were, as you can probably see, there are some instances of great signage throughout the village, and then in other instances, there are some examples of maybe not so good quality signage. And in looking at our code and trying to leverage the skill set of some of our design professionals, we ended up discussing, debating, and recommending that we create a design review board in South Orange, where at certain steps in the process where somebody, whether it be a use permit, et cetera, it would trigger notification for a design review board and a referral to go to them. Statutorily, they cannot be binding in nature. They cannot say yes or no, but they can offer advisory opinions to the planning board and to, most importantly, to the people who are seeking to get certain signage approved. So it's not the heavy hand. We hope that the design review board will be able to offer those recommendations, and with the financial incentives that were introduced in the first reading of the budget, the matching grant program for facades, we hope that any new signage or updates to existing signage, we can require, in order to get that match, that it seek approval from the design review board. So throughout this business code review, we've just kind of been looking at these little things to try and enhance and streamline the process for all these people who are folks or business owners who interact with us and try and get these approvals and try and get quality signage and make it more of a one-stop shop. And so the Village Center Alliance had agreed that with the creation of a design review board, they would basically eliminate the existing design committee that they have. SAVCA, again, just represents a special improvement district. Very generous of them to expand that to the entire town, so it's not just one area being the beneficiaries of a design review board. So that standing committee or working group under SAVCA will dissolve, and we will have a village-wide design review board, which hopefully will recruit and attract a lot of volunteers that exist right now for the Village Center Alliance. So there is no ordinance. If everybody gives me a nod or whatever concerns that you may have, I can bring that, you know, to the code review working group and make sure that your questions or comments or concerns are reflected in the first reading that we will be bringing to the governing body. I'll be advising the planning board at their meeting the first weekend, August, and it'll come here first, it'll go to the planning board and come back here. So hopefully, you can see something by the fall, at the same time, announce the matching grant program and the establishment of a design review board. Are there any questions on that? Fantastic. And for the public's benefit, the Board of Trustees is having its planning meeting this Friday, starting at 11:00 a.m., and going to, I think, 6:00 p.m. So there are several things that will be happening at this planning meeting. Love our planning meetings. First, we have issued many rice notices to employees, and we're going to be talking about, not necessarily individual people, but just our organization in general, performance evaluation, setting goals for departments, employees, et cetera, very open-ended, and that will be led by trustee Deborah Davis Ford. So we really want to hunker down on personnel management, et cetera, so we'll probably be doing that for a couple hours. Shortly after that, each of the trustee's standing committees have provided the top three priorities that they have for the governing body moving forward, and we hope to make sure that we prioritize those items amongst all the standing committees, which adds up pretty quickly when you have six standing committees, three top priorities, you're already at 18, and we have so many working groups. So we want to make sure that we're all on the same page and we're very clear in our direction. And really, it's also a time for us to look at all these working groups and these statutory boards, these advisory committees, et cetera, and make sure that, you know, we're doing a good job recruiting volunteers, advertising the opportunities for people to get involved with the village government, with the Board of Trustees, and it's time to get to know each other a little bit better. So I'm very excited for that planning meeting, and the public can expect a report no later than the second meeting on August, on some of the things that we came to decision on and how the board is going to be moving forward over the next year. Are there any questions for the village president? Great. Moving along to the village administrators.
My report will be fairly brief, and I'll explain why in a minute. The budget, we already talked about somewhat. It has been introduced. It's been sent down to the state after a little bit of a delay because of the auditor who has to sign it was not immediately available, but it's been sent to the state. We are waiting, and I have provided them with what I could anticipate would be their review questions and the materials. It's not to say that I anticipated them all, so I do expect some feedback. This is, once every three years, we are examined by the, our budget is examined every other, the other two years. It's called self-examination, so that it's a little bit more of a process. We lasted it in 2012, but we will certainly work to respond to any questions and concerns they have in order to assure and try and hold to our August 10th scheduled public hearing adoption date. There is always the possibility, particularly with staff reductions down at the DCA, that, you know, but again, we will do everything within our power to get them what we can as quickly as they ask for it. The other component of my capital project updates, and I have done this before, but when he didn't have bullet points, but seeing that trustee Clark has very detailed bullet points, many of which cover what I was going to say, I will share the spotlight and not steal his thunder, and I will just supplement as needed, and I'll defer to trustee Clark on that. So that's all I have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Lewis?
I do have one question, which just triggered something. Whatever happened to the best practices checklist?
What do you mean, what happened?
The annual best practices checklist.
We did. It's not, it doesn't coincide, well, they have a new deadline. We did it earlier this year. I think it was all circulated, and we had the public hearing on what our things were, and I can look up when it was.
Do you remember?
It doesn't coincide with the budget, that there's a requirement to do it.
I don't remember seeing it.
It wasn't, it wasn't this past, at least it wasn't a missed calendar year.
I think it was towards the end of last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It possibly been the beginning of this year. It's on a fixed cycle for all panels.
Yeah, it should be coming up. Trustee Levinson is ready for the, for the report card.
Yep.
Before we move on to trustee Clark, there is also one more update, is that the trustees can expect at the next meeting, this had been previously discussed quite some time ago, but we will be doing an amendment to our spending plan for COA, well, I can't even say COA, but an amendment to our spending plan to reflect an appropriation for an emergency generator at 219 South Orange Avenue, which is a fully senior building and is eligible. We had previously discussed this in the Public Safety Committee, I believe, finance and IT as well. Because COA, there's issues, it's been a little bit difficult getting answers on getting an amendment or changing how we can appropriate some of these funds, but this would allow for an emergency generator, a backup, and an all-senior affordable building. So it is eligible, or one would hope it's eligible, because this has been done in Cedar Grove. So we've been discussing with our COA council, along with our village planner, and so it is likely that we will ask the board to take action at the next meeting on this. Is there anything you wanted to add to that, Mr. Lewis?
No, other than, again, the intent was to file it with COA, and then before we could file it, COA got disbanded. So we're not 100% certain. Our intent is to file it in connection with the declaratory act that's been filed with Superior Court, and then move forward with it, and we think we're well protected. We vetted it with COA council. Our planners weighed in. Again, we have an example that we can rely on, that while COA existed, they approved it, so I think we're in good shape.
Great. Okay, trustee reports. Trustee Levinson?
Yeah, I just have...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, counsel.
Yeah, just a quick report on the transitioning of our water system to a new source and to a new operator. The work with New Jersey American to bring the new water source in is pretty much on schedule. Work should be getting this fall. The work, our schedule on the operator for the system has slipped somewhat, primarily due to the fact that we couldn't get critical information from East Orange Water to the potential parties that will be interested in this, in this operations and maintenance contract. We have created a new schedule now, which starts with the submission of proposals on August the 6th, and now terminates January the 26th with the signing of a contract. These are proposals that are going to be submitted on the 6th, which are confidential, under Title 58, which is the law that we're relying upon to enter into this contract. All proposals remain absolutely confidential. We select a party to negotiate with, and ultimately, the only contract that gets revealed, or proposal that gets revealed, is the one that we select and is ultimately approved by the BPU and the local finance board. It's critical that we get this done by January, because we're looking forward to the balance of 2016 as phase one work, where the new operator gets in sync with the new water supply, has to create a new control facility, and we want to be absolutely certain that by the time we're ready to turn off one valve and turn on another, that the system has been tested and will work as designed.
Just one quick update. Best practices was last October and was discussed at the board meeting on October 27th, so it'll be coming up.
So, hello.
Get ready, yeah.
Make a note of it.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Rother?
But how long should the New Jersey American Water Infrastructure Changes in Construction take?
How long will it take?
Take, yes.
It's only going to take a few months. I think they said about four or five months.
So they'll be working through the winter?
Well, there are two...
Before the hard weather sets and...
Yeah, they're going to start in October.
Yeah, they're looking to basically try to do it and wrap it up in fall, so to speak.
Oh, wait, they're starting in the fall, though?
Yes.
October, yeah.
Right, they're starting, so it'll...
But there are two parts to it. One is the piping, and the other one is the construction of a pump house. So they occur two different times.
I guess they think it could be affected by weather issues depending. So that'll take a few months?
Yeah, they expect that, what did they say? They think they can do 100 feet per deck?
Yep, 100 feet a day. That's for the, you know, for the mains.
Gotcha. And how many feet, in total, how many feet are we looking at?
I think we're looking at slightly over a mile in total.
So 5,000, that's about, you know, 50, about two months, and 100 feet a day, yeah, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Rother? Okay, moving along to trustee reports. Trustee Levinson?
Yes, I just have two topics. One of them being something that I've been trying to get done for a long time, and I think is critical for us as an organization, which is my number-one priority for our planning meeting, and that's a project management system. We've discussed this a number of times. I think the latest suggestion, get the name right, Smartsheet looks like it's a good product for us, and I would like to create a project to prototype it and move forward with it. The price seems to be good, as well as it looks like Microsoft Project Easy. And that, I think, in a number of our other discussions about setting objectives for the various departments, we can easily now, using a project management system, see across what the manpower loading would be, and for what the impact of any new project that we're bringing forward would have an impact on the other work that's being done. The other discussion that we had at the finance meeting was Civic Plus, and I defer to Madam President for talking about the implementation plan. We are putting an implementation team together, which...
I love when you say Madam President. Okay, so really, been looking at just kind of the sites, the way that a site map should function. Trustee Schnall had agreed to work with me. Unfortunately, he's not here yet. We're going to be having a kickoff meeting with Civic Plus, Mr. Lerner, next week.
Sure.
So the contract was executed, and I think the goal is to hopefully get rid of some of the, well, not get rid of, if it's working, but some of the additional applications and everything that we had interest in and rolling it all into Civic Plus, especially since we have the functionality to be able to do that. They provide 24/7 customer service. It'll just be a little bit easier to have municipal website, outreach, data, et cetera, all in the box. So I think we can expect that, I had said this before, trustee Schnall said no, but to manage expectations, there's a lot of changes I think that the trustees would like to see, that I would like to see, that we want to try with integration. So I think a great projected timeline, based on what Civic Plus had showed us it would take to make sure that we did things correctly, would be the end of this year. So just to make sure that we're clear with the public, is that it is not a top priority in terms of IT. We have a lot of IT projects, but we're going to keep moving through the process, making sure that we do outreach to all the different working groups, to the committees, the boards, the commissions, to make sure that their information is up to date, it's on the website, it provides good information to the public, and that we're happy and content, and we're able to, you know, beta test this amongst ourselves. And then hopefully, July 20, July, January 2016, we will have a new municipal website, ready to go. Any questions?
Yeah, and one other comment, that in parallel, we're looking at rebranding ourselves, we're looking at the brand that we will have on the website, so that may change as we develop or implement the website.
Correct. Any questions for trustee Levinson? Trustee Clark? Trustee Clark, thank you so much for always providing so many bullet points.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how to take that. First, let me apologize for stealing your thunder. I didn't realize I was doing shit.
I'm not blowing it in front of you guys.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, so... Okay, okay, there you go. Yeah, so in terms of the water changeover, Mr. Rother did touch on some of the basics of that, but I did want to point out that there will be a, a viewing session. The pumping station plans for the, for the public this coming Thursday, or which is July thirty?
Thursday.
Thursday. So July thirtieth at the village offices, seventy-sixth South Orange Avenue, third floor meeting room. And that's basically going to be concept drawings of the pumping station, which is proposed along the DPW road. Really, it won't affect most people. I think only the immediate neighbors to the area who are gonna be looking at it are gonna be the ones who are interested, but it is for the, the public to see. In terms of local road paving, Barry jumped in. If you've heard anything more recently, I'm going on Friday's info from the village engineer. And again, most people who are affected by these probably know this status update, but if anybody's out there is interested, Bowes and North Ridgewood are both done. Up in North Newstead, it's going to be paved after the curbs are done, and that's gonna be in a few weeks. Terrell Avenue between Grove and South Orange Avenue should start in the next two to three weeks. The village engineer is expecting a more updated schedule on that one this week. And then the curb and sidewalk program and Toulouse Road projects are going out to bid and will be taking bids on August the thirteenth. In terms of county road paving, the big one is Wyoming, which is, Wyoming Ave is still slated for work in August. We haven't gotten anything more specific from the county in terms of when in August, but they're still saying August. Folks in the north end of Wyoming know that the drains and catch basins are already being switched out and replaced, but the, the paving proper is not until August. Let's see, our forestry plan, been moving along on the forestry plan with Rich Walowitz. I hope for that to be finished soon. I'll bounce it back to him and we'll see when he comes back with, with further refinements. The Duck Pond and Skate House projects, the, it's the refurbishment of the Skate House and the refurbishment of the Duck Pond. They're gonna go out to bid soon. We're gonna get those back on track and hopefully I will be able to give you schedules in the near future. The Barrett Center feasibility study is still going on. We are pending delivery of that within the next month, however, which is going to be another interesting conversation. Also, one of the other things we just recently worked on, which I'm gonna bring to the Public Safety Committee tomorrow night, is the, a no left turn on Beach Spring Road. We have had issues with large vehicles like buses coming off of North Ridgewood Road and trying to make lefts onto Beach Spring Road, which if you are familiar with it, is a floated road and also has a, a very steep grade. And so depending upon your vehicle, that just plain does not work and has caused some traffic tie-ups and involved the police and works. So we're gonna look at getting rid of that, hopefully speed things along on Ridgewood Avenue, legally speed them along. Lastly, CCR, Community Coalition Race, is still seeking interested parties for their two thousand fifteen Civic Engagement Institute. For those of you who have not done it before or do not know what it is, it is a series of workshops geared to people who want to know more about what it means to be a volunteer in South Orange or Maplewood and how to assess their own skills and interests and what opportunities exist in our community. The organizations, governments, the structure, et cetera. The sessions are, are free and they're open to all residents of South Orange and Maplewood. If you want to find out more and to apply, go to their website, which is www.twtowns.org, T-W-O-towns.org. And specifically, the Civic Engagement Institute will take place on Saturdays, October seventeenth, I'm sorry, tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth and thirty-first from nine fifteen to twelve thirty P.M. And this year they will be at the South Orange Public Library. So that is the, can we update that?
If I could just supplement, I did want to point out on North Ridgewood, I think many of you are aware, we ran into some unforeseen obstacles. There was a lack of communication where I think we did not understand that the South Orange Maplewood Adult School Summer Day Camp Program had moved from the high school because of work at the high school to the middle school. So we, we kind of dropped the ball in fully coordinating that. It did create some logistical issues with traffic and parental drop-off and then it was compounded by finding a collapsed pipe that added another day to the work. I do want to specifically recognize and thank Judy James, the executive director of the Adult School, Angel Lee, the co-president for, as well as our Special Operations Division, Lieutenant Corgan and Adrian, Sergeant Acevedo. Everybody made the best of it. I think we had the outcome because people didn't engage in finger pointing and tried to find solutions. I, I did want to specifically recognize them for their, their patience, their cooperation and their working with us and all in all, it turned out great. The road looks good, so thanks.
Just following up on the roadwork, the S-turns will be closed this week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, South Orange Avenue between Wyoming and Cherry Lane.
Are there any questions for trustee Clark? Okay, moving along to trustee Rosner.
Two things, you know, at the Planning and Zoning Committee we discussed, one of the things we discussed was follow-ups to planning board approvals where, I don't want to name anything specific here, but we've had this problem come up at least three times in the past few years where something gets approved at the planning board and then some point in the future, the, the site owner applicant makes a change and does something. We don't really have a system for following up and making sure that everything, it's just sort of relied on, on, on our own observations. I'm not really sure if there's a better process than that or not, but it's happened enough that I think that we really need to figure out a way to how to have code enforcement or a zoning officer, planning board person go back to the site a year later to make sure no modifications were made that the property owner decided might make the site better without coming back to the planning board first or at least seeking a meeting with the proper people at the planning board. I can think of three instances where this has happened before and we still have not come to resolution on any of those. Most of the meeting was spent with the attorney representative of the HPC Historic Preservation Committee to revise their ordinance. They actually took the old ordinance, cleaned it up. We, we discussed it. We ran it by village attorney Rother, who came back with a couple of minor comments, which they made the changes for. We sent it to legal committee for review, but the planning, the Planning and Zoning Committee is recommending we go ahead with that ordinance if the legal committee's done. I can, I can send it to anybody else who's, who wants to see it.
I understand there's gonna be another iteration though of the, of the.
The other iteration is gonna have those two minor changes that you recommended.
That's all?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And there was no substantive changes?
No. No, that was the, that was the main concern, that there were no substantive changes.
Is there recommendation from the legal committee sever on the HPC ordinance? You're good to go?
Yeah, good to go.
All right, let's, you want to prepare for the next meeting for interruption?
Yeah, we went, we went through it, the meeting, some changes have been made that are acceptable to all of us. The main concerns we had was to make sure that this organization could protect the structures and buildings that had historical value and benefit to the community, but at the same time, did not restrict decisions that needed to be made on behalf of the village through either this board or the planning board, that we can make the right decisions if some adjustments or changes needed to be made.
The attorney, Bill Sullivan, who did most of the work on it, I thought did a very thoughtful and very careful job and explained it everything extremely well. So I really have no complaints about it at all.
Okay, so why don't we shoot this, Mr. Rother, this will need to get referred to the planning board as well, correct?
Yes.
This will get referred to the planning board?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So why don't we go ahead and, we can shoot for Ms. Kaojeen either the tenth or the twenty-fourth, because the planning board doesn't meet until the first week in September. So whenever clerk's office is ready, we can have it on either one of the agendas.
We don't have a special planning board for the meeting.
In September?
No, in August.
There's a meeting in August, the planning board, but we don't have any more meetings for us, so the planning board meets on the third. And you know what the third is?
The eve of National Night Out?
The third, the third actually has a fairly full agenda already too, so it's kind of hard to.
So we will, we will shoot for either the tenth or the twenty-fourth, let the HPC know that it will be introduced in August. It'll be referred to a planning board first week in September and then we'll get it back and take action as soon as they're completed, they're.
Now, the reason I ask that question is because we're planning on New Jersey American Water to make a presentation to the planning board as soon as possible.
I think we were thinking, maybe August for this.
Yeah, yeah, we thought August.
Yeah. They would prefer, they would prefer to do something in, in late August, but, but early September would be acceptable.
We probably should talk to the planning board then about whether there should be a special meeting for this or a combined meeting. They actually have, I mean, we have a, there's a lot of stuff on their agenda, so I don't know how long the presentation would be, but if it's gonna be more than an hour, which I assume it will be.
I, I, I don't, if it's more than an hour, it's simply because of questions. I think, I think their presentation can be made very, you know, half an hour, I would think would be, would be more than enough. If there's a lot of questions, then of course it could go, go beyond that.
The only reason I mention that we do it is a special meeting, because a lot of these people who come before the planning board bring expert opinion on, who they're paying, and I think it's gonna be very difficult to, to do it. And I think we could do our meeting if we, if we can come to a date without having, you know, to waste the time of, of experts who are there, who are getting paid by the degree trusted, Phil, Madam President.
I totally, I a hundred percent agree, especially for applicants. This is our presentation.
You want to reach out to Mr. Coop or Max?
Yeah, absolutely. How long do you think roughly the presentation alone is?
Well, he's saying half an hour, but I think we should allow an hour for questions, answers and the presentation.
Took us two hours this morning of conversation.
But Howard, if you were involved in that conversation, of course it's gonna be two hours.
That's because Mr. Trustee Levison makes sure everything that comes before him is fully vetted.
True that.
He's still voting no.
Okay, so are there any questions for trustee Rosner? Okay, I'd like to open the public comments, the second public comment period. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to address the board of trustees, as a reminder, please state your name, your address and limit your comments to three minutes.
Seeing that.
Seeing no, no comments, I will close this section of the meeting and open it up for new business.
I'd like to discuss something that I, that I came across that was very concerning, that was sent to me. And this is regarding an article some time ago, and I make sure that I will send it to you, that quoted the Montclair Board of Ed, who made a reference to our Board of Ed, Maplewood, South Orange, that they were going to make some decisions so that they would not duplicate the mistakes of South Orange, Maplewood. And that's regarding addressing disparity issues in our school system. And I'll make sure that I'll get that article to you. There are a couple of things. One, is there a need, what I'd like the board to consider, is there a need for us to respond to that? Or is there a need that we would request for our concerns regarding this article, if you all feel the same for the Maplewood Board of Ed, to address it and respond? Sometimes I believe that if you, if something is put out there that is not positive and you don't respond to it, then it becomes accepted as a fact when it's not. So the other, along those lines, I also am concerned, and I think I've brought this up in the past, that we have standard meetings that have been going on for quite some time, decades even, regarding our meetings on Mondays, the second and fourth Monday, and why the Board of Ed, who has two other Mondays in the month, cannot choose Mondays as their night to meet, they desire me to meet on the, on either the first or the third. Something that's so critical as the education of our, our, our young people and in addition, the investment of our taxpayers' money where we, where it's fifty-six percent of our tax bill that goes to the Board of Ed. And I, you can correct me, but I think it's about a total, our contribution is about over forty percent of their budget. Then they need to be respectful of being, of having meetings where we can attend. And in addition to that, I would like them to come, have a representative come, it could be once a quarter or twice a year, to make a presentation to this board. So I am making those requests and if that could, if something could be prepared to, to send that to the board and looking for a response, I'd appreciate that. And that article that I have, I will send it to you.
It was a presentation from a consultant to the Montclair Board of Education, correct?
Yeah.
The, the one I was.
And I have it and I forgot to bring it.
Yeah, no, I read it also.
Where was the article?
It was, it was a consultant's presentation, I believe, to the Montclair Board of Education on what to do and not to do.
Is this recent?
It was about a month ago. And it, this is one trustee Davis word concerning to me also. I mean, I've had a couple back and forths with things that I thought mischaracterized our town, but in this instance, I think that they were just kind of looking at models that, that worked and didn't work to address the disparity. And there's a portion of it that I don't necessarily disagree with. So I think that it was a little bit more subjective in nature and, and more just showing you, you know, even the best efforts aren't gonna yield the results that you're looking for. I don't think it was intended in that, in a way, to, to look down on a district, but just that they made some choices that didn't necessarily fix the problem that they were looking to address. So I probably wouldn't get involved with consultant reports or anything like that, you know, presentations if it were, you know, an elected official or a governing body making statements and perhaps we would follow up.
And, and I, and I, I, I hear you, but when you're dealing in, with the public, they don't have the time or they don't, maybe they're not as thorough as you, of vetting the sources and information, maybe. They don't have the tendency to try to understand the whole context or something. We're in this Twitter, you know, A D D, Facebook type of culture, that they, they hear, see a headline in a title and then that perception, they, you know, they build a, a perception is created out of that and then that becomes the reality that one believes it. So all I'm saying is that I'd like everyone to see this article and determine if it's something, if it's much to do about nothing, then fine. But it, it is that perception out there, it affects the quality of our community. It affects the value of our homes. It affects how people perceive this wonderful town that I think is a great place to, to live and, and for our children to be educated in. So I just want to have everyone look at it and determine, again, if it's something that we should not even invest any time responding to because, again, perhaps I'm reacting to it differently than, you know, I, than you or anyone else. But if it is something that's out there, at least my thinking is that maybe let's have a written, you know, response, maybe just a general statement. I'm not sure how to respond and if we should respond, but it was something that really, really concerned me.
Why don't, why don't you send it to the board trustees and I'll follow up with you and, and we can reach out to the Board of Ed and make sure they're aware of it.
But the final other things I, I, I don't want to fall through the cracks is I really want a request to the Board of Ed to consider moving their meetings from happening either. request to the Board of Ed to consider moving their meetings from happening either on the second or the fourth of the month. And the other request I'm making that, you know, if it's arduous, you know, once a quarter, I mean, I can respect that, but have someone come before this board twice a year, and it's not too much to ask, when, again, almost sixty percent of our taxes go to their budget, and our contribution makes up over forty percent of their budget. That, I really, really hope that we can make that happen.
And you have raised that in the past, and we have a meeting, Mr. Lewis and myself will be attending, with Maplewood and the Board of Education, and both those items that you had requested before are on the agenda.
Wonderful.
Has the board used to make a presentation more?
Yeah, many years ago, the president of the board, I would suggest that if we do have the Board of Ed come here, that we have it with a specific agenda in mind, you know, like obviously, I think we all want to hear about their budget and any major changes that they have in a policy. I don't think we want to get into, into anything nitty-gritty with them, you know, Board of Ed issues. But I think they, it'd be fair to say that at least once a year, they should come to discuss the budget, and once a year, they should come to discuss any, anything significant going on at the schools.
And similarly, I'll certainly offer myself and any trustees who wish to join, that if they would like to welcome us to one of their Board of Education meetings or quarterly or something like that, I'm happy to go there. Show me some of the work of our board.
As I understood it, I also thought that the Board of Ed meetings were always scheduled for the first or third Monday of the month, except when there was a holiday that interfered and made it go to the second or fourth. And what I said to them, to a couple of the Board of Ed members, it used to be that the Board of Ed would then make Wednesday of the same week, so it'd be the first or third Wednesday would become their alternate date, not the following Monday. And when I brought that up to them, they said they would consider going back to that. But I think, I think there's usually two or three meetings a year that can, that have a conflict, and it's not, it's not as if it's every month.
It seems like we're hitting each other more often, but I kind of feel like that's because we're calling a lot of special meetings, and it's not our fault.
Right, it happened, it happened with the specials.
It happens with our special meetings.
The other thing is, is that we used to have a liaison meeting with the Board of Education and...
It is on the agenda for our planning meetings.
Okay, but the other, and the other part was that I think the Board of Education needs to assign a liaison to the, to municipalities, somebody specifically that is assigned to South Orange and...
Like a staff member?
Yes.
Has to go into the yellow section of my notepad, because that's my quick notes, that's my follow-up. Okay, I got it. Are there any other new business items? Don't move through adjourn yet, one more shout-out. Landis-Carry, Grove Park, had a great, friends of Grove Park, new group, they cleaned up Grove Park, it was really nice, there was a bunch of residents out, Public Works helped out with that also, it was really great, and as a result of that amazing cleanup, I had another resident from up in Newstead say, "We'd really like to go clean up Cameron Field or Cameron Park," and it seems like, you know, people see neighbors get together and do a cleanup, and then it's like pay it forward, and then other neighbors want to help out. And so I wanted to say thanks to Landis, because she just kind of came up with the idea, and she's mobilizing the neighborhood to do a better job taking care of Grove Park and working with the village on it.
I saw that post that you put on Facebook, and I'm really excited to see that sort of engagement. And that really is a beautiful park at Park right there.
It's wonderful.
One of, you made me just think about something else, is it Farrowfield? It's the first park in South Orange that the neighborhood associations put together at Conservancy, and there are so many opportunities for grants and matching grants, and I would love to see that happen with Grove Park and all the other parks, these groups, maybe reach out to that committee for Farrowfield and duplicate that. And the reason why I would be excited to see that happen is that I see from a county level in my role, the county parks, there's so many groups now that have that sort of organization, and they've been able to obtain significant grants, and then a county can match it, you know, either their open space fund or whatever.
Like they established the Fargo and Sioux Free.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what Farrowfield Conservancy has done, and it may be good model to apply to if we can get enough, enough interest parties for individual parks to apply that because of the home matching.
I'll pass that along. What's really cool is that Richard, who's a rock star, he was already at the cleanup, so he already knows Landis, who's creating that. So they've already got the kind of network of neighborhood leaders who are talking to each other about what they're doing, which is great, because it, you know, doesn't mean that we have to be involved in everything, they're, they're great without us.
And the Farrowfield is relatively new, they're Fargo.
Well, a couple of years now, right?
Yeah, and they can...
The one I'm currently seeing is relatively new, but the Farrowfield Conservancy has been gone for a couple of years.
That's the park you're supposed to, right?
Yeah, it's my neighbor.
Yeah, and so I would just like to see if we can have those for each park that we have.
I'll pass that along to Grove Park, make sure they know, and tell them to take a look at that.
Well, I think they've already had a conversation.
Or they have the sort of adopt a park model wherein people do cleanups, but I think if we can have a more organized park conservancy for each one of them, there is this extra layer of being able to leverage funds in a different way with a shared goal, I think.
That's the vision I see.
That would be a great model, because it kind of expands.
Okay, is there any other new business?
I move to adjourn.
My second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Extensions? We are adjourned.
Yeah, but my talking.